Good afternoon. I would like to call to order the June 13th, 2022 work session of the York County School Board. Dr. Shandore is not feeling well, so Dr. Carroll will be representing him this evening. And Dr. Carroll, I know you would like to make a couple of comments before we begin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Most of the viewing public is aware that on Friday, we lost two York High students in a tragic car accident. This news has left all of us with heavy heart and deep sadness. This morning, we had staff and counselors available to provide students and staff members support at York High with representatives from Yorktown Middle and Yorktown Elementary. Dr. Butler, York High Principal, Mr. Witham, Yorktown Middle Assistant Principal, and Ms. Bolam, Principal at Yorktown Elementary, were making every effort to provide students and staff the emotional support needed during this difficult time of grieving and remembering the lives of these students. Please continue to keep these families and your thoughts and your prayers in the days ahead, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'd also like to share that the entire board sends their condolences to the family and friends affected by this accident. No words can ease the pain for those suffering this loss, and we ask the community to keep them in their thoughts and prayers and support them in any way we can. But I would like to take a moment of silence to honor these two young men and the grieving families. All right. I'm going to go ahead and move into our business portion. First, we have a strategic plan update relating to Goal Two, Objective Two, one, Authentic Learning Experiences. And we have several presentations this evening, and those first five relate to our strategic plan. So, Dr. Carroll, do you want to share additional information?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Bob Sherlock, Associate Director of Educational Technology and Innovation, will provide an update on Agenda Items A through D, which include four objectives under Goal Two of the FY 18 through 22 Strategic Plan related to student experiences. The presentation will include information on authentic learning experiences, intern experiences, career awareness, and high-demand clubs. Dr. Sherlock?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Carroll. Tonight, I have the privilege of addressing several strategic plan objectives related to preparing our students to be career-ready. Four of our strategic plan objectives are tied to our Career Connections Program. These include implementing authentic learning experiences for all of our students, increasing the number of clubs at the elementary and middle school levels that provide exposure to high-demand career fields, providing career awareness and exploration opportunities for all students, and providing opportunities for our YCSD students to participate in work-based learning experiences prior to graduating high school. The next few slides will address authentic learning experiences. Authentic learning experiences form a foundation for learning where students engage in research, critical thinking, and problem-solving, while at the same time, learning the content of the curriculum. Here's what this looks like at the elementary level. On the left, you see two students working with a Sphero robot, coding it in order to follow the colors. The robot will, depending on the color, will make a left, right, go forward or reverse. So, the students are using critical problem-solving skills to make sure that robot goes in the right direction. The picture in the middle is a student who created a review of the food web using a Ozobot robot to help, again, follow that path of the food web, again, with the same ideas, where the robot will follow either a series of colors or the patterns to make left-right turns, even a little dance. The student on the right used recycled CDs to create a kaleidoscope for his unit on light and sound. Authentic learning experiences don't stop at the elementary level. Our middle school and high school students also research, think critically, and problem-solve. Here on the left, two students are using a Sphero robot to learn about friction and velocity. The robot needs to navigate through the maze, and they are changing the code depending on the friction and the type of material that the robot is going over. The two students in the middle used a bungee cord and a doll, and they predicted how many rubber bands to use in order to make that doll fall just barely enough so it doesn't hit the ground. And they used slope, and their prediction of slope, in order to do that. They took rubber bands, and they, you know, a certain number of rubber bands, they determined how long that fell. And so, they understood what that line of mx plus b, that slope equals. The picture on the right are students using critical thinking skills to determine how to treat an injury in our Health Science Academy. The next objective covers dip high-demand career clubs at the elementary and middle school levels, where our students are exposed to robotics, engineering, and other STEM fields. These clubs provide exposure to high-demand career fields, as well as develop critical thinking, creativity, and collaboration skills that are important to today's workforce. Let's look at some of these club offerings that nearly 600 of our students participated in this year. Here at the elementary level, we have many clubs, and I have listed a few here. The picture on the left shows elementary students involved in the robotics and coding club, whereas the picture on the right is a student in the STEM-making club who made a birdhouse with an LED light to attract those birds for their home. Here you see some of our middle school clubs. STEM-related clubs help students develop life- and career-ready skills, as well as computer science skills through robotics and coding. The picture on the left shows a group of students in the Makerspace Club, while the picture on the right shows that Ozobot again, and students learning how to code, again, using a variety of different patterns in order for that Ozobot to navigate a maze. The next two objectives are related to career awareness and exploration opportunities, along with work-based experiences. These objectives are essential components to ensure students are ready for the workforce. In York County, students at all levels are exposed to career awareness and exploration. Students in the elementary school level are introduced to careers with career days and academic and career portfolios. At the middle school, students begin investigating careers with career fairs and speakers, along with the Career Investigations Course. At the high school level, students begin career implementation through career events and work-based learning experiences. I'll first present some information about our career fairs. Career fairs introduce our students to a variety of the 17 career clusters. On the left, you see technicians from Dominion Energy discussing the careers and the skills necessary in order to be successful. Our secondary schools were also involved with career fairs. In the middle, you'll see a NASA Communication Specialist presenting to middle school students. And on the right, you'll see York Pocohos and Sheriff Office deputies talking about their drone program to one of our high schools. Is that the middle school where students begin investigating careers they are interested in? Every middle school student takes a career investigation course, which introduces them to academic and career planning. This class bridges the exploration in elementary school with the career implementation at the high school levels. Students work on workplace readiness skills, learn about career clusters and pathways, take a variety of career surveys and interest assessments, and begin their academic and career plans. You'll see the picture on the right where students are learning to work as a team in order to solve a problem, which obviously is a very important skill in our workforce today. Another area where students learn about and engage careers is with career events. We had a number of career events this year, and here are just two of the examples. The picture on the left shows students in the fashion marketing class visiting a specialty boutique, where they learn about marketing and how to run a business from start to finish. The picture on the right shows our very own Jason Bussow, a network engineer, talking to students enrolled in a cybersecurity class. Over 100 students visited the SBO IT Department and learned about the various careers that are available for cybersecurity. The entrepreneurship courses provide students with the opportunity to design and operate a small business. Students learn business terminology, basic entrepreneurship concepts, and fundamental business practices. A number of student teams have the opportunity to bring concepts to reality as they operate as pop-up shops, where they sell the items to the school community. The picture on the left shows, this picture on the left shows elementary students in the Makerspace pitching in an idea and getting feedback from a high school student. The picture in the middle shows middle school students selling their products that they marketed and developed from start to finish. And the picture on the right is, shows a winning team from the YCSD Pitch Night, where five teams pitched their proposal to local businesses. The winning team, called Sold Out, conceptualized interchangeable soul you would swap out depending on the sport you played. And the same student, high school student on the left with the elementary students is the same student on the right who won that pitch. So, it's great to see that collaboration between the elementary and the high schools, and all the schools. One of our strategic plan objectives is a measure of workplace readiness skill we want all students to participate in before leaving high school. High school student, high school courses with work-based learning components help our students develop essential skills necessary in the workplace, as well as help them discover careers that they might or may not like to pursue. Here are two examples. The student on the left is in the fashion design class, who is practicing using a 3D pen, 3D pen, to prototype original accessory designs, with those glasses on the bottom there. The next picture shows students enrolled in the Teachers for Tomorrow course, where they're learning about a day in the life of a teacher from a CNU professor. Kristy Morgan, Director of Student Services, will provide information on how we support career awareness and exploration for students with disabilities.
Well, I'm excited to share with you how we are meeting, offering career awareness and exploration opportunities for our students with unique needs. While most of our students with disabilities do participate in the wonderful activities that Dr. Sherlock has shared with you today, we do have students that require more hands-on and individualized approach to be ready for the workplace. So, I'm going to tell you about three programs that we offer to teach students the work readiness skills required for today's workplace. We start with Project Explore. This offers students the opportunity to participate in a school-based enterprise. Students get to create and market and sell these products to their staff and to their friends at school, and while they're acquiring those workplace readiness skills. And once they're introduced to those and have acquired them, we'll move on to Project Experience. And this is where they actually have an opportunity to go into the workplace in the community with a job coach and practice and apply the skills that they've begun to learn. We have students going out to a variety of places in our community, such as grocery stores, bookstores, parks, recreation centers, and even military bases. So, Project Searches are one-year internship program for our students in their last year of high school. We have two Project Search sites, one's at Williamsburg Centera Hospital, and the other one's at Fort Eustis. These students rotate through four nine-week internships with people who are actually employed at these sites, and they're doing a variety of jobs, such as customer service, security, retail, and administrative support. They also partner with an agency called the Department of Aging and Rehabilitation Services, who actually helps them find employment and supports them into their first job, once they leave us in high school. Another thing we realize is that our families do have a lot of questions and concerns about how to successfully transition their students once they leave us. And so, we have monthly meetings called, we refer to as Transition Tuesdays. And so, these are meetings that feature available services, such as the Department of Aging and Rehabilitation Services, Colonial Behavioral Health Services, and local college offices of Student Services as well. This summer, I'm excited to announce, we're going to continue with our Transition Tuesdays. These are going to be virtual meetings that parents can log into, and those links can be found in the YCSD Digest, on our website, or in the Summer Academy catalog. And you can see here the topics that we'll be addressing. Now, it does appear that most of these are appropriate for secondary students, but I want to assure you, it is never too early for anybody to log in, and we really encourage our elementary-age parents to consider joining us on Transition Tuesdays, so they can help their students also think about the future and ways to support and transition.
Everything we have shared tonight, all of the goals, support the profile of a Virginia graduate. I know we have shared this information before, but just as a reminder, these goals all support what we want our students to do before they graduate. This concludes the strategic plan update on Career Connections. We are happy to receive comments and answer questions at this time.
I'm just excited to see that the Transition Tuesdays continue over the summer. I think that's a great resource we're able to provide, families here.
Thank you. Are those recorded so that we can post them and make them available for people at a later date if they can't tune in?
Yes, they have been recorded. I'm not real sure where we have located those recordings, but we will make it available on the website and accessible to parents as well. We usually send out a blackboard announcement to our students, our families, to let them know about what's going, where they can log on, and how they can know about that information.
And, Dr. Sherlock, we have all these Engaged In Partners. Are we utilizing them for our internships and mentorships?
Without doubt, so.
If COVID, it's been different, but...
So, even like the boutique that they visited, that was one of our Engage In Partners. And we didn't talk about it, but even the virtual and the in-person job interviews, right, of the practice, the practice points, we engaged, I believe, almost nearly 100 of our Engage In Partners. We have 255 or so right now, so we're always trying to engage our community and bring them into our schools.
Do we track, like, data for the authentic learning experiences in the different clubs and participation of it, so we can get, like, almost like a spreadsheet, so teachers can pull from ideas, or we can track who's participating?
We track the, both clubs, the regular club along with the high-interest clubs. The authentic learning was difficult this year, just because of the start with, you know, in-person classes, and we felt that we want to make sure that the classes themselves were strong. But as you can see, I think those pictures were all taken from this year, and I think every, you know, every teacher's doing probably more than the two that they say in our strategic plan. So, it's exciting to see the variety of pictures and things going on in the schools.
Okay.
Are you planning, I'm sorry, thank you. Are you planning to see the program grow as they go from elementary to middle, then to high?
I think example with the entrepreneurship classes, where, you know, we brought on a new grade level every year, I think that's exciting, because again, you saw that collaboration between not just the kids in the schools, but again, I know one of the high schools came down to an elementary school, not once, but twice, and they were super excited. I talked to their teacher afterwards, and they learned, as we can imagine, they learned just as much from those elementary kids, those fifth graders, as they were learning from each other. So, that was super exciting to see. So, I'd love to see more collaboration between, between the school sites at the different levels.
That's great.
Yeah, just as a quick wrap-up, I always take the opportunity to steer parents and community members to the website. YCSD website, Career Connections, under What's Trending. The whole framework is laid out from elementary up through high school. It's very, very nicely done. As we all know, we've made significant gains in the last several years. But again, it's an excellent framework we continue to build on, and I would encourage, again, any community member or parent to take a look at that and ingest that a little bit, the framework in particular.
Anybody else? All right, thank you so much. Next, we have our strategic plan update on Goal Four, Objective Four-One, Family Engagement. Dr. Carroll?
Yes, Ms. Cheryl Parr, Associate Director of School Administration, will update the School Board on Goal Four of the FY 18 through 22 Strategic Plan as it relates to family engagement. The presentation will provide an update on the implementation of the school-level family engagement plans for the 2223 school year. Ms. Parr?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Carroll. This afternoon, I will provide a strategic plan update on Goal Four, School Culture, specifically addressing the area of family engagement. Our current strategic plan objective for family engagement has required each school to include a family engagement focus within the scope of their school improvement plans. Because of the pandemic, of course, plans have looked somewhat different the past couple of years. However, during this time, our schools have worked very hard to create many ways to connect with our families. As you may recall, our YCSD Goal Four, Family Engagement, continues to focus on the difference between parent involvement and family engagement. You've heard me speak before that we have a responsibility to not just involve our families, but to ensure our efforts engage them in ways that all can participate. This concept will be important for our next steps, particularly with the implementation of our new strategic plan that we have coming next year. I will now share information about the types of activities and resources our schools have provided to our families. As I mentioned, we began the year working around COVID restrictions, and there were many. But schools did their best and were still able to make connections and build positive relationships. Many activities took place outdoors until we began having more events indoors during second semester. In our elementary schools, communication connections continued through weekly newsletters and phone calls. Home visits occurred. At Dare Elementary, one example is 400 positive office referral phone calls being made. Many events included an academic focus. Schools had STEM events, career fairs, and literacy or math nights. Gatherings for English learners or Title I families occurred throughout the year as well. PTA or school activity nights often included fun activities to involve the whole family. The picture you see here is from Seaford Elementary, where kindergarten parents participated in walkthroughs during the school day to become further acquainted with what instructional learning in the elementary school setting looks like. And yes, that is Barbara Nagel in a turkey outfit. Speaking of Seaford, last month, you had the opportunity to hear about their students, staff, and parents regarding the positive impact of student-led conferences. Mount Vernon Elementary implemented a similar initiative with their Spring Open House, which allowed families to view a portfolio of their children's learning for the year. Middle schools worked on expanding parent awareness of ways they can connect with their children's schools. They received input through parent surveys and provided online how-to documents and videos. Yorktown Middle held registration nights for families to become more familiar with course offerings. High schools also strive to expand communication connections and engage families instructionally by offering different events regarding academic course planning. Before returning to indoor offerings, fun events for secondary families included virtual, as well as outdoor activities in school parking lots. Once we returned to indoor events, celebrations of student accomplishments occurred, for one example, in music through a variety of concert offerings. Some of our schools partnered together by zone to provide family events this year. One example is the Falcon Egg Hunt occurring in April in the York Zone. Great planning by the schools ensured that a good time was had by fall. Another zone event example is the Queens Lake and Bruton English Learner Engagement Night, which was greatly enjoyed by those who attended that event. And as you know, one of our claims to fame in YCSD is that we have the highest concentration of military-connected students in the state of Virginia. This year, our schools continued providing military family support. They hosted several building-based recognition and support events, such as this Tab High Appreciation Assembly that you see here. We currently have 11 schools recognized as Purple Star Schools by the Virginia Department of Education. By September, it is our goal to submit applications for our remaining schools to achieve this status as well, so that we can become the first division in the state to have division-wide Purple Star status. So, cross your fingers and wish us luck on that effort. I will now review the many division-level activities and resources provided to families this year. Our Instruction Department has been very busy. Instructional information was provided through many avenues, such as newsletters and academic parent nights, and I'd like to highlight just one of those now. At the Division-Wide English Learner Open House that was held in the fall, we had over 200 families attend, while instructional staff enthusiastically sponsored activities to make positive learning connections. I know some of you attended that event to see that in action, and you were able to see firsthand the value of building relationships with our families. We implemented a new program this year to provide students with extra academic help. We contracted with FEV Tutor, a nationally-recognized company, to provide free online tutoring services for students in grades three through 12. Students and families had access to support at any time, from any device, with an internet connection. Support sessions were live and conducted through chat and a whiteboard. This summer, families are being offered packets with instructional games and activities for parents of three- and four-year-olds. Rising kindergarten packets have transitioned activities and supports also for those children. And for the first time ever, beginning later this month, the Summer Academy program will offer both daytime and evening family engagement opportunities, which are very exciting. All YCSD families may participate, and as you can see, events will cover a wide range of topics, and I haven't even included all that they have planned so far. The Division has strived to ensure that families have been informed throughout this school year. In addition to normal processes, the YCSD Return to School Plan once again provided in-depth and accessible information for all. Our Chief Operations Officer continued providing his televised updates, and live streaming of school board work sessions and monthly meetings continued as well. Our Public Relations and Communications Officer created timely YCSD Digest to make families aware of updates and changes as they happened. And the Communications and Public Relations Team responded to hundreds of parent, student, and community inquiries on matters relating to the Return to School Plan, safety measures, family support, and student enrollment. We expanded communication efforts through the implementation of the Let's Talk Ask YCSD platform, allowing families with questions to get their facts straight from the source, the York County School Division. Although we continue to encourage our families and staff to speak directly with their teachers and building administrators first, this new customer service tool makes it easier for our community to contact various team YCSD departments and staff members while improving efficiency for the Division. This avenue of communication will ensure our stakeholders receive timely responses, and will also help identify topics and questions being discussed across the whole Division, not just at one location. Let's Talk Ask YCSD can be accessed pretty conveniently on the YorkCountySchools.org website or through the YCSD mobile app. Throughout this year, parents have had a variety of ways to share their voice at the Division level, too. The ability to provide public comment at school board meetings continued, and parents were asked to participate on numerous committees to provide input into such areas as next year's school calendar, and then several of our areas for education, such as special and gifted education, and career and technical education. I want to now share with you what our next steps are as far as this area of family engagement. Before the pandemic, we began learning about current framework research with the Virginia Tiered Systems of Supports, or VTSS, regarding how we can increase our family engagement. Involving families as equal partners is a key component for this research and very important for our Division. A YCSD team began participating in the William &amp; Mary School University Research Network, or CERN, Family Engagement Academy, also before the pandemic began. This work has focused on the five principles that you can see here. Information learned from experts in the field will provide insight for how we can move forward by embracing, empowering, and then engaging every family in this Division, which of course is our goal. Designing meaningful professional development for all YCSD staff will be important for expanding the area of family engagement, because we need to have common understanding really as we work with our families for what the best practices are for working with them on a daily basis. We plan to provide many different types of offerings for our staff in the 2223 year. Last month, we gathered some stakeholders from all school and Division levels to review how we can expand our current parent involvement, excuse me, parent and family engagement policy by aligning the tenants of the policy with current research. This instructional policy, IGBC, is currently tied closely to Title I academic program requirements. During the focus group meeting that we had, we asked the three questions that you see here. Gaining insight into what is valued about family interactions and what we need to consider as we strive to appropriately expand policy about family engagement is key to this work. Valuable feedback was received from this group. Here are just a few of the recorded responses. Moving forward, this work will be considered by the larger Family Engagement Committee. Our goal is to create an additional policy that focuses solely on family engagement and include it in the School-Community Relations Case section of our YCSD Policy Manual. And we want to focus on the next steps that you see here, too, working to enable parents to participate in a variety of ways. As you know, our families volunteer hundreds of hours to the York County School Division. We would not be able to do what we do on a daily basis without our volunteers. As the year went on, we were able to accomplish the expansion of in-person volunteer efforts as COVID restrictions lifted. But we look forward to once again involving and engaging our families next year. As the year went on, we were able to accomplish the expansion of in-person volunteer efforts as COVID restrictions lifted. But we look forward to once again involving and engaging our families next year through volunteering on an even more broad scale. Thanks for the opportunity to provide this update, and I'm now happy to answer any questions you may have. Questions?
The zone events are really helpful, because so many families have kids in all the different grade levels, so being able to come together and have administrators and teachers from all of the schools there helps do that. And all of the research shows that higher family engagement leads to higher student achievement. So it's great to see that collaboration.
Our administrators have had discussions about how we can expand this next year into all four of our zones, so I'm very excited about that.
Great.
And I know they are as well.
You know, just one comment. We take every opportunity, particularly teachers and staff, to educate and inform parents. One of the comments that a parent made to me recently is access to training, somewhat similar to professional development, and the need particularly for younger parents to have perhaps access to training that we might be able to provide through the schools. Just something to think about, an additional engagement feature. The other piece, we had accent on academic Seaford student-led conferences, nearly 100% parent participation.
Yes.
So I would certainly like to see something like that spread across all the elementary schools, but certainly at middle and high school, nearly 100%. I thought that was phenomenal.
I know. There are conversations with administrators already about the expansion of that.
This doesn't surprise me, for sure.
I think for all of us, we've been going to events in the spring when things opened back up, and I know I've been absolutely shocked by the sheer number. And I mean, when we went to the Sound of Music, and he said, "I never in a million years thought there'd be that, this many people in the audience." But I think having all that taken away, we realized the importance of it, we realized what we were missing, and so a lot of us, especially parents and community members, were happy to be back in the building and seeing those in-person activities. So it's been great, and I hope that continues next year. I'm also grateful that you brought up Let's Talk.
Yes.
It's one of the problems we see in society is that a lot of times people won't turn to Facebook, and sometimes Facebook groups that don't necessarily have the right information. And so one of our jobs is always talking to people about the right process to go to. Let's Talk is perfect. The feedback that I've gotten from it is people have never gotten answers so fast from the appropriate person.
Yeah.
And so I'm grateful that you brought that up, because it gives us another chance to talk about it, how powerful it is, go right to the source.
Yeah, I directed a couple people to that who've contacted me, and they said like the feedback is almost immediate.
Yes.
They'll get something back. It's a great tool.
We're all striving for efficiency, right?
I talked to one parent about it, and he said, "Well, you know, there should just be a button for that." And I said, "There is a button for that." It's there. Super easy. So thank you so much, Ms. Parr.
We need a bigger button.
Yeah. No, no. Next, we have our 2223 Student Handbook. Dr. Carroll.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Aaron Butler, Director of School Administration, will provide an overview of proposed revisions, modifications, deletions, and additions to the 202223 school hours and conduct code for school board approval. Rationale for the changes will be reviewed. Dr. Butler.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Carroll, thank you for this opportunity to present revisions to the Student Handbook and Conduct Code for the 2223 school year. Per the Code of Virginia, local school boards are required to adopt and revise the standards of student conduct in alignment with Virginia Board of Education Model Policy. While not required by state law, the School Division annually provides families with information concerning academic, operational, and financial practices along with related policies. In addition, School Board Policy, CZ, Student Handbook stipulates that the regulations in the Student Handbook have the weight of school board policy. It is important that parents and students review the Student Handbook annually to ensure that they are aware of important information concerning testing, behavior expectations, academics, and Division procedures. In an effort to improve readability and increase ease of use, the handbook layout and formatting is being reorganized to transition from an alphabetical to a topical ordering of content. As you can see, there are several new fields that will be developed, and one, of course, is a welcome section. After that, About Us, which tells more about our Division, just some general information for families and parents. Then our Instruction Department has really focused on student learning and success and have reorganized the content there, a student health and safety area, family engagement and communication, similar to what Ms. Parr was sharing a few moments ago, and then finally the Student Conduct Code. To the frame of the presentation this evening, I will share content revisions that fall to two categories. One is information that represents substantial changes to current instructional and operational policy or practices, and then revisions that comply with state and federal regulations with regard to the Code of Conduct. There is a revision request for a shift in school hours for four of our schools in the York Zone. As you can see on the chart before you, there is a five-minute shift being recommended for the hours operation for our three York Zone elementary schools, DRC, Seaford, and Yorktown, just shifting from 8:55 to 9 o'clock AM for start, and a dismissal from 3:35 to 3:40 PM. And then for York High School, a shift from 7:20 up five minutes to 7:15 for start and dismissal from 2:05 to 2 o'clock. And again, this is being recommended to assist with transportation timing. One of the things, when we switched to the one-to-one device, the last school year, or the last two school years, there was a handbook that was developed by a committee from the Division. What you'll see is also that they're merging those two together, so our acceptable use policy is being merged with that one-to-one handbook for students. Mrs. Skinner has previously shared at a board meeting, with our preliminary scholastic aptitude test, which is the PSAT, language added stating that ninth-grade students are provided an opportunity to take the PSAT 8-9, and 11th graders are provided an opportunity to take the PSAT, the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. And some language removed, that test used to be given in October, that language was removed so that it flows more with the national when they decide to provide that test. So just some minor changes there. For our Code of Conduct, there's an additional, so in the elementary section, there are three codes, RB1, which is bullying with no physical injury, RB4, saying or writing either directly or through electronic communication sexually suggestive comments or other remarks of a sexual nature, and RB9, using slurs based on perceived or actual race, ethnicity, or protected class. In the current handbook, the maximum is just a Level 2, and I'll provide more details on the next slide. It was recommended by school administrators that that be added to a Level 3, which the Code of Virginia does allow school boards to do that, to be more stringent than the VDOE guidelines. And so to understand on that next slide, you will see that for Level 3, that is just an out-school suspension of 1 to 10 days, as well as social probation or lost school privileges, and that a reentry meeting is required whenever a student has been suspended from school. So that is the changes being recommended for that increase. Another addition to the Code of Conduct is the process for claims of self-defense. Currently, there is guidance from the Virginia Department of Education for how administration should handle any situation where a student claims that they were engaged in a physical altercation, but they were acting in self-defense. So that information is now clearly delineated in the handbook for families and students. There was a few regulation changes, and I will go through those as well. One regulation that changed the Code of Virginia was updated and revised, so that now public high school students who apply for a pass to park a vehicle on school property must write evidence that that student does possess either a valid driver's license or a driver privilege card. There was a regulation that came from Virginia Department of Education, the Superintendent Memo 8-22 back in January, and it just states that school divisions are no longer allowed to assign in-school suspension for a student who's in violation of one of the attendance-related codes. So BAP4, which is just unexcused tardiness, BAP5, which is unexcused tardiness to school, and then BSO4, failure to be in once-assigned place. You can give consequences, but in-school suspension cannot be one of those choices. There were some additional behavior codes that were added as well. So one is BESO18, which indicates that any crime which a student occurs in the community where charges are issued and that information is disclosed to the superintendent, the School Division can also provide some disciplinary sanctions, and so that we code it in the system as such. There's another code, BSC8, which is for harassment, and that's a code that was added so that if there's a situation where there's repeated annoying or attacking behavior towards a student, that can also be captured and that can also be handled as a school-based matter. The third code that was added was BSC9, which is distracting the bus driver. There were codes that talk about misconduct on the bus. This one is specifically geared towards distractions to the driver. An additional revision is to the handling of alcohol, tobacco, and marijuana offenses for first offense. So we delineated in the handbook two years ago what the process was when there was a first offense for the possession of marijuana. Due to changes to the Code of Virginia, making marijuana one of those offenses, which is illegal for individuals under 21, but is similar to the same offense for alcohol possession and tobacco possession, so we've just updated the sanctions in this particular section that match the Code of Virginia. Then there's some legal codes and citations that were updated recently in the code and also the Virginia Department of Education. So any student who is in violation of a community-based charge that has to be reported to the Division Superintendent, the School Board has the authority to alternatively place that student until that matter has been resolved by the courts. So thank you for this opportunity to present revisions to the Student Handbook and Conduct Code for the 2223 school year. The final addition of the revised Student Handbook will be presented to the Board at the August meeting for approval. The revision to school hours and the updates to the Student Conduct Code are on your special school board meeting consent calendar for this evening. I am available for questions at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. Questions?
So the changes in start times, that doesn't affect Yorktown Middle School, correct? It's just the elementary and high schools in the zone?
Yes, sir. It is just, it's just the high school and then the three middle schools, I mean, elementary schools.
And that assists the Transportation Department in getting in and out of the schools in a more timely manner? Is that the idea behind it?
Yeah, there was a study to look at the efficiency and the timing for transportation, and so it was recommended that by making these slight changes with hours, just the five-minute shift, it would allow our buses a little bit more continuity and flexibility with covering that route and being on time for those routes.
It extends their windows by five minutes.
Yeah.
And we were seeing that we were missing the boat by seven to eight minutes on average, so now that moves us before school starts.
Okay, with a 10-minute window there now. Okay.
Just one quick comment. Normally, when you have a regulatory document, you have a revision or change page. Is there a deliberate reason why we don't have a change page where you highlight major substantial changes from the previous edition? Or is, we just, we've chosen not to do it? Is there a reason for that? Or?
Yes, with the reorganization of the handbook, and that's what we're going to read back to you in August, it was because of the way that we realign things, content under the different headings, we wanted to make sure that you had an addition, that you could approve that everything, line item. What I put in the presentation tonight with all the substantive changes when it comes to the discipline codes, I did put the wording in there that would appear in the handbook. It's just that we wanted to make sure you had a copy to approve.
I understand. That's okay.
I was just going to say, I went through the red line, one that you'd provided to us and all. Most of the changes were not really huge. It was just small wording changes and stuff.
Right. And for the Code of Conduct, we, you know, most of that was state regulations that were some changes that we had to add.
The harassment piece that was changed in there, were personnel always included in that piece?
Yes. So last school year, we had to adopt a new code. So it went from the Discipline Crime and Violence Report, which was DCB, and we went to Sbar. And so there was a crosswalk between the two documents, but the two documents were not exactly the same. So there were some things that we started picking up this school year that had not crossed over, so the state, when they were redoing the documents, there were some issues as far as alignment, and so we realized that there were some things that we do here in York County, which is a little different from other school divisions, and so it was asked that we would please go back and incorporate some of our previous practices that had been changed by the state.
And so at the beginning of the year, everyone gets their handbook, and they've got to sign that certain, certain pages and send those back. Do we also have that in electronic form, or is it still just paper?
So that document where they sign off, that's in RICOR, and we first started that last year because of the one-to-one initiative, but also because we're providing the handbook electronic. But we always keep hard copies as well for any parent who requests a hard copy instead of the electronic, but we have been switching and transitioning to the more electronic form and use it right.
That's something I had to score some years ago, because there was a lot of waste on some of the papers.
It used to come home, we'd sign the last page and rip it out and send that back in, and then you'd never look at the book again.
Well, we're not supposed to do that.
No. I'm just telling you.
I don't know that we shouldn't review it at the front end of the year, but I know that takes instructional time away, but at a minimum, the changes.
You've got five kids. You've got five of us. All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Butler.
Thank you, Dr. Butler.
It looks like our next update is our York River Academy update. Dr. Carroll.
Yes, ma'am. I think Dr. Butler's going to help Ms. Sheffield and get this queued up on the screen. Pleased to have Ms. Sheffield join us, the principal of York River Academy. I believe this is your first presentation.
Yes.
So please be kind.
If you can handle that graduation speech, then you can handle anything.
That's right.
It's wonderful.
It was wonderful.
She's going to provide a brief update on York River Academy, and that will include an overview of the school and information on how to apply for the program. Sheffield.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Carroll. Thank you for inviting me to talk about our unique and special program that is York River Academy. York River Academy began in 2002 as the first public charter school in the state of Virginia. It remains one of only seven in the state of Virginia to date. Initially, it was a foundational program to better prepare students for high school success in grades nine and 10. In 2009, it expanded to serve students in grades nine through 12, and we continue to do so today. While there is a focus on business and technology and has been since the beginning of the program, YRA has continued to evolve to meet the changing demands of our students and the job market on the peninsula. Here you see our motto, "Together We Rise," and our newly-designed Phoenix mascot to the right. You can see that life-size in our building right now, it's been painted by one of our students. You'll get a preview in a minute. We are a student-centered program, structuring our program to support those students who have struggled to feel connected in a larger school setting. With substantially smaller class sizes and only four classes each semester, students have an opportunity to focus on those classes and get to know their teachers at a deep level. They often have the same teacher year after year, providing the content area instruction for them. It also allows us, excuse me, it allows us for maximum credit recovery when we invite students to be part of the YRA family after their ninth-grade year, when they're recommended by one of the other four high schools. Each student is unique, and their program of study should reflect that individualism. We've been blessed to partner with a virtual high school in virtual Virginia to give students opportunities to take language courses and other electives in order to study, to pursue their advanced studies diploma. In collaboration with our charter's governing board, parents, staff, and students, we focused on the power of resilience as the core of the YRA mission. When I met with each of the teachers this past summer, to the one, every one of them told me that the confidence they see in students the first time a grade report comes out and shows them being successful is hard to quantify. That confidence then builds competence with the students as they take more and more courses through YRA, and that competence builds that connection with the teachers and their peers. And that connection makes them want to contribute, not only back to YRA, but to the community At YRA, we're focusing on giving our students the skills and supports they need to reach their goals. On the left, you'll see one of our students who participated in an internship program through the IT Department with YCSD for the past two summers. He's now recently engaged in an interview for a full-time position as a career tech. He'll not only be giving back to his school setting, but he's also entered into a competitive field. The student in the middle, which I think you'll recognize here shortly, was part of our NJRITC collaboration with York High School. She had an interest in going there. She got up super early and went to York High School every other day. She got up super early and went to York High School every other day. And she had the opportunity to take part in all the extra credit and elective opportunities through NJR OTC. Next year, our freshman class will accept three students that are going to take part in this opportunity. And then to the right, one of our students was signing through the Good Life Solutions Program at New Horizons. He had just taken on a competitive internship with one of the local building. It's, it's just, I always get this confused when I say this out loud, but he's now apprenticing with them while he's going to school so he can have an opportunity to gain more experience and get a better job when he's done. So we often get asked what the typical YRA student looks like. Well, that's not an easy answer, and I've asked Mandy Collier, a parent and a teacher at YRA, to help with this one.
Good evening. Like she said, I am, I have been the math teacher at York River Academy since it started in 2002. But most importantly, I want to talk to you about my role as a mother of a recent white York River Academy graduate. I'm going to try not to get emotional while I talk about it. So I have two children who are in YCSD schools. I have my son who just graduated last week, and then I have another son who is a sophomore at York High and doing great, loving it, part of the program, AP classes, just doing wonderful, just really loves York High, been very happy with what, with him there. And then I have my son, Harvey, who I always knew he could do more. I always knew he could do more. He, we would have fights at the dinner table, getting homework done. Let's get our homework done. Can you get your homework done? Can you get your work that you're supposed to be doing in class today? Can you get that done? Many times at conferences, we'd be like, oh, he has so much potential, but he didn't do anything today. He sat there and did nothing. And I'm like, oh, my gosh, my kid sat there and did nothing. And I always knew he was capable of more. And as he went through middle school more and more, I realized I had given birth to a York River Academy student. So I, he is a typical York River Academy student. He thrives in the small class size. You cannot hide in York River Academy. You're at a desk, we're there, and we're making sure you're getting work done. He really thrived with the structure. Having that four-by-four classes where he can concentrate on just a couple of classes at a time and having the electives that go with it was very helpful. And then teachers are, you know, it's not just here, work on this, it's let's work on this, let's walk around, let's work together on this. He is the other intern from the, in York County School Division and loving it. He's probably still at work right now. Has an interest in technology and gaming. When he leaves work tonight, he's going to go back to New Horizons and help with their open house to talk about the program that he did there. And now he is going to be a Thomas Nelson student next year, and I'm very proud of him for that. And that's really what our York River Academy students are. They're students who have all this potential and we can see it, and it's like, why aren't you working? Why aren't you doing this? And why you have this, like, you can do more. And York River Academy just provides those tools for the students to do more and to become more involved with the community. So I'm very grateful as a mom for the program.
Thank you. So while YRA does have a uniform dress code that is more business-focused than the other YCSD schools, we enjoy a little dress-down fun and frolic too. And I have invited Tessa Wosinski to share what it's like to be a YRA student.
So YRA sometimes seems like it could be like a really strict kind of environment sometimes because we have like a certain dress code. But Ms. Sheffield plans really fun spirit weeks, and she has each day, it's like a really fun dress-up day, like pajama day during the winter. We did a scavenger hunt where we looked for bells throughout the school. That was also for Christmas. The girl in the costume, who is one of my friends, she, this is during Halloween, she created her own costume and she wore it in. And then the senior picnic, I didn't go to because I'm not a senior, but it was just one of the things that was planned that was just a lot of fun. So like, there's just a lot of fun stuff that's planned in the school that Ms. Sheffield plans and a lot of the other people who work at YRA.
Thank you, Tessa. It's hard to do that. Our science allows us to tailor our outside community business partners, colleges, military recruiters, and others to visit to share how, what they share with us leads to student options after graduation. We don't bring in large colleges, those are not generally the four-year schools that our students will go to. We'll bring in the smaller schools. The military has had a lot of focus. One of our graduates that just walked across the stage last week has signed to join the Navy. We want to make sure that the students have opportunities to meet with members of the community that will offer them jobs when they leave YRA. Every student engages in mock interviews with members of our community through the Engaged In Partners. They also engage in simulations and games to enhance their learning. On the left, you'll see one of our just graduated students taking part in a presentation in his ecology class. In the middle, you see some of our seniors taking a bite out of reality during economics and personal finance, finding out it's not particularly easy to live on your own. And then to the right, there's a, I think we've seen this picture very close to it anyway tonight, our career fair. We were super proud to partner with Julie Warlock, who is one of the career coaches for the division. She went through the Engaged In Partners and found organizations that very much met the interests of our students, brought them in. Our kids had an opportunity to go around and ask questions. They did a scavenger hunt that was really more question-focused. I always worry when our students, who can sometimes be super shy, are put in these situations, they just talked and talked and talked and talked. And all of the partners said they wanted to come back next year. And we did this the day before spring break, and we had probably our best attendance of the year. The kids were super excited about getting dressed up and coming in and presenting themselves really well to the outside partners. Our goal is to build those soft employability skills, and oral presentations are a big piece of that. Each year is a public charter school. We're tasked with providing specific data to support our program. We have a pretty lengthy document that we've shared with you that gives you all of the information about our year as a charter school. But for us, each one of those pieces of data represents one of the students on the right. Down to the individual student, we know who those students were, what employability skills they've gained during their time at YRA. They're leaving us with stackable, sought-after credentials, skills for the workplace, an increased social awareness, and a confidence to enter either the workforce or further education. We know down to the individual one what their next path's going to look like. And they culminate that, and just did last Wednesday, in a presentation to all of their parents, all of you, and their peers. And it's just such a heartwarming experience. So how do you become a YRA Phoenix, you might ask? This year, we had a focused, intentional reeducation process with the middle and the high school counselors and administrators to better publicize our program. No longer are we happy to be the best-kept secret in York County. We want to be sure we are available and accessible to any student that needs what we have to offer. As a public charter school, there is an application process. It often starts at the homeschool with either parents or counselors identifying students that need more than they might get in one of our four amazing high schools that we already have to offer. At that point, the prospective student meets with me personally and their parent. They come in for a short interview and a tour. YRA is not for everyone. We want to be sure that YRA is the right fit for them, that they see something that sparks an interest and a desire for them. We want to be sure that YRA is, in fact, their place to belong. So thank you for allowing me to share a bit about the wonderfully unique program that is York River Academy. I'm sure you probably have questions, and I'm happy to answer them. Or if you would like, you can address those to either my parents/teacher or Tessa, but be nice to Tessa.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sheffield. I know I was looking forward to this because, I don't know, I just think YRA is great and I just love walking into your building and just seeing the connections you make with students, connections with teachers. So if you guys don't mind, I have a couple of questions. There are a couple of misconceptions in the community about YRA, and I know you didn't necessarily address them in your presentation, but I want to bring them up so that you can talk to them. One of them is that you don't get to be in sports, ROTC, or anything else when you go to YRA. I know that that's not correct, but will you just talk about that a little bit?
This year was a very intentional focus on increasing the opportunities that students have at YRA. Dr. Hartley was actually really instrumental in working through VHSL to be sure there's a sort of underwritten law that if you do not have VHL sports at your charter school, then the students can try out and participate in sports at their own schools. We had a student try out for soccer, didn't make the soccer team, but then he also tried out for track, and since track is a little bit more open, he made that and he was, he participated in track. And I know that we have a couple of students next year that want to do basketball and volleyball at their home schools. And so it's coordination, it's a lot of coordination, but they have that opportunity. I've also worked with a student who wanted to be part of an organization that we didn't offer at York River Academy, and their homeschool would have been York High. And Dr. Butler's been wonderful about offering those opportunities to those students as we need them. SO is another option that students have in the county. I've worked with Ms. Dockery to be sure that if there are students, we don't have any in our incoming class. We had one that thought she was interested and changed her mind. But when we do, Ms. Dockery is more than willing to open that up for those students. And I can't thank Senior Chief and Lieutenant Commander enough at York High School for being open. That sometimes meant that Tessa had to leave a little early or she had to get there a little late for an after-school activity, but they were ready and willing to offer those opportunities to her.
One of the other misconceptions, that it's an alternative school for kids with behavior issues. Will you speak to that a little bit?
We're alternative, but we are not alternative for behavior. In fact, that is one of the disqualifying events in part of the application process. We look at the whole child, look at your whole record, and if there's discipline that is not disability-related, we do know that there are times that some of our students with disabilities will have behaviors that are not atypical for those disabilities. But no suspensions, none of those things, we're not taking students that have discipline issues.
Thank you. Thank you for clearing those up. And just my, my comment is, every time I've sat at that graduation and I listen to those kids talking about their experience, I cry only for the sheer fact that, number one, they represent themselves so well. They're super vulnerable in those speeches, just talking about where they were, why they came here, and what it meant to them. And every single speech really just is evidence to you and to you and just everybody there and how you connect with those kids. And so I wish every single person could see that. So go watch that graduation so you can watch those speeches. It's just, it's just so moving, and I think, you know, all of us felt it. I don't know if anybody else cried, but. I know you did. But it's just, it really is just evidence of everything you're doing there. So thank you so much, and, you know, obviously, thank you to your staff, but it's just a great experience.
And it really is the staff. I can't say that enough. They've built wonderful relationships over the years and continue to do that every day.
That's the thing that struck me was how connected the teachers were to the kids. And I mean, it was almost like they were all their own kid there, you know? It really was. And they, those kids are going to take a part of YRA with them wherever they go.
I agree.
It's just neat to see, like, when all the kids are talking at graduation. Like, I love all graduations, but YRA is just so special to see it, to see, to see your class get to discuss or talk about what it really meant to them to be able to attend it. But how many of them choose to call the teachers out by name and thank them in a public forum like that? It's just, it's heartwarming to see.
And they write those speeches on their own. It's part of their English 12 class, so there is a little tailoring that goes with it. But that's, we don't, we don't take things out a lot of times. Sometimes there's some odd things that you hear. But that's what they want to leave us with, and so it's important that they have that voice.
You know, some of the other tangibles, the business technology track, all credential, all graduating seniors have credentialing, which is, which is remarkable. And there's a very strong alignment, obviously, with New Horizons. So, you know, emphasis on that. And then many, thank you for your service to our community, our schools. Thanks for sharing with us. And Tessa, thank you very much for sharing too. That was, that was very well done. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, I'm glad to see the alliances with the other programs that we have, the ROTC, the sports, that maybe weren't there in the very beginning of the school there. So that's wonderful that you're able to do that. So thank you.
Even the four-by-four, making every accommodation so that everybody can be successful at YRA. Definitely.
One of the pieces of data that I did not put in this presentation, but I think illustrates that, is we had students who were coming to recover credits this year. And if you took it, took them all together, they were there to recover 36 credits over the course of the year. Out of that, they recovered 32. So that's pretty tremendous. And put those students back on track to graduate, and they'll stay with us, none of them are leaving.
And to see that there was like 80 different CTE credentials in just the senior class.
That is remarkable. When we talk about transition, that embodies transition, where you've set the conditions for a graduating senior to be successful.
That's remarkable.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we move to our capital projects report. Dr. Carroll.
Madam Chair, we are off to a fast start here this spring with our capital projects. And Mr. Mark Sheerhart, Associate Director for Capital Plans, is here to give an update.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Carroll. Here's your capital project report for the month of June. We are off to the races here, and we have a lot of projects to talk about. So Seaford Elementary is the first one of those, the renovation and additions there. So they have a lot of things they've accomplished so far. They poured the concrete footers for the classroom addition and for the gym stage. They began foundation, laying the foundation block walls. They finished taking down the trees in front of the school. They completed drilling the geothermal wells. They do plan, we talked about it this morning, we had a meeting about replacing some of the original classroom windows, which is something that wasn't supposed to happen until next summer, but they're trying to get a jump on it this summer here, so they're going to change out, trying to change out some of the windows. And we had the bus loop and the vehicle parking lot expansion and the Seaford Road widening, all happening in next summer, in the summer of 2023. So I had some IT department help today, but not computer-wise. They had some drones. And so David Kilburn and Russell Payne helped me out here. They took some of these pictures, aerial photograph here. You see the Seaford Elementary School is at the very top of the picture there, and you see the foundations there for the addition at the back of the school. That's the classroom addition there. And this one here, a little bit harder to see because of the shade, but they, you can see the foundation block wall there for the stage. It's going to be next to the gymnasium. And this one here, you can see on the left-hand side is the, is Seaford Elementary School. On the right-hand side is the, is Seaford Road. So this whole area here where we've removed the trees, before they had one row of cars, you can see that one row of cars, that's all they had before. Now we're going to put three rows of cars in this area here where we took out the trees. So they're going to have a substantially, substantial increase in parking and also be able to queue cars through there for apparent drop-offs. Should increase, should improve that dramatically. And then, then here's a rendering of the front of the school, which I've shown you before, and I just wanted to conclude it. So York High School Roof Repair and Coding. They've been busy there too. They've replaced roof insulation and felt plies over the locker rooms and the teen rooms. They began installing some cap sheet last week. They are, they are planning to dramatically increase the amount of work they have going on now. And they worked around the gymnasium areas because they were trying to stay away from the classroom areas so we weren't interrupting classes by the noise. So they've got that area done now, they can, and now since the students are gone, they can move out onto the rest of the area of the school. So here is some of the roof insulation waiting to, waiting to be installed in the roof, but that's some of the, that's some of the gold we couldn't get last year. Remember, we talked about we couldn't get, couldn't get moving because we couldn't get this insulation. So they've got some on the ground, they've got some on the roof there, ready to rock and roll. This is one of the roofs. They've completely tore off the roof here and replaced it, just over top of one of the locker rooms. And then we have another aerial shot here, courtesy of the guys in the IT staff. And you can see here, the white building on the right-hand side, left-hand side, the white roof there, that's the main gym with the three windows in it. So down below there, they've taken off the roof. That's the boys' locker room. They've taken off the roof there, put the, put the roof felts down there, the insulation down there. And then between the gyms there, the auxiliary gym is on the right-hand side with a dark wall there. And down there on the roof there, you can see where it's white, whiter-looking, and that's white cap sheets there. So they actually have some of the white cap sheet going down on the roof now. So they've made really good progress. The Bruton High School Gymnasium work, so we have some work going on up there. We're sanding and refinishing the floor. sanding and refinishing the floor up there, we're repairing the damaged HVAC duct work there, replacing some of the wall crash pads, just things that needed to be upgraded and repaired and improved. And so that's what it looks like now. They took out all the old, the beat-up air conditioning duct work there, and you can see right now here, the electricians are up on the lifts there, they're doing some conduit and running some wire there. The Queens Lake Middle School is another gym we're doing some work in. That one there, they're removing the synthetic gym floor and installing a wood floor in that one, very similar to what we did at York Middle School and Tab Middle School last year. Repainting the entire gym, replacing the lights with LEDs. Again, we're replacing the crash pads there, and this is what that one looks like here. This is last Friday, you can see them in there, they're painting the, they're painting the ceiling white now in this picture here. So we do have some additional other projects that are going on. Additional projects going on, I don't have pictures for yet, so, but I'm going to mention them. Tab Elementary School, we got to repair the playground drainage there. They delivered the excavator on Friday, they were going to deliver some pipe, it should be today, today or tomorrow, they delivered the pipe there. Bethel Manor, that's a project I'm doing, is Tab Elementary School. Greg Dolak is also very busy, too. He's handling the next two here, Bethel Manor and Coventry, which are improving some drainage problems they've had at the schools there. And then the last two here, the big one here, Bruton High School, installing the Astroturf football field there, that's Greg Dolak's handling that one. And then also, last but not least, the school board office installing additional security measures there to make it somewhat similar to what we have in the schools. And those are my last projects today. Do you have any questions?
I just have a quick question, but there's been some question about, you know, school safety and stuff like that. I know with the construction at some of the schools, the last few years, we've increased, like, the vestibule and safety ability to get in. Do we have any schools that don't have that double layer, that double door to get into the main building?
So the only school that I know of right now that doesn't have the security vestibule is Queens Lake Middle School, they don't have it.
And if I can interject there, and we're having that looked at right now by a construction company.
Okay.
And the reason we didn't do that is because we thought we were going to be expanding that building shortly, but since all the funding is laid down, we're having to move that to Project Addle away, so.
So the Seaford Road widening, how far is, how far will that expand? Will that alleviate some parking issues?
Well, we believe that expanding the parking in the center there, where we tore down, took down all the trees, when we have three rows of parking there, it's going to be, you know, a lot more, I think we have, we're adding 96 parking spots, I think, is what they're saying, they said to me. So we're adding all that, but we're also queuing the way that the cars can come in, because they can, they'll be able to zigzag through the parking lot now, the way we're laying it out, so that we can take more cars into the queue, rather than what we have now. Right now, they can just queue in front of the gym, and that's it. So now they're, Seaford Baptist Church is being so willing to let us queue over in their parking lot, but hopefully, we, once we get their parking done in front of the school, we can, we shouldn't have to use that anymore.
It's like a snake that goes through, Coventry does it through the, through the parking lot, then the back of the bus loop, and then you pull around to the front. It's really cleared up the traffic from before when they first did it right there on Coventry Boulevard.
Thank you, as always, for the wonderful pictures and update.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for the IT guys, too.
We are moving on to our FY '23 budget update. Dr. Carroll?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Bill Bowen, Chief Financial Officer, will provide a FY '23 budget update.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Carroll, this afternoon, I'm pleased to present the superintendent's proposed changes to the FY '23 budget. Certainly, this process has been a long train running, and we're not quite done. The state currently sits, the state budget currently sits with the governor, where he now has the opportunity to sign the budget bill or exercise his line item veto. Let me present to you what we have to date. If you recall, March 28, the school board approved the budget. This total was $169.3 million. On June 1, the General Assembly adopted a budget, and this increased the operational funding for YCSD by $1.5 million, a little over $1.5 million. In addition, staff has been monitoring changes to the student enrollment throughout the budget process, and as a result, is now projecting enrollment to be 12,766 students. This is an increase of 95 students from the March 28 budget and accounts for an additional The General Assembly approved a bonus payment for FY '23. This funding is based on all eligible SOQ and support positions and provides YCSD with approximately $1.244 million, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in the next slide. So all total, YCSD received an additional $3.367 million with the General Assembly budget, bringing our total operating budget to more than $1.7, I'm sorry, $172 million. So on this slide, we see the changes in state revenue by category. First here, we have an increase in SOQ funding totaling more than $1.9 million. More than a half million, of course, is related to the increase in enrollment. The remaining $1.4 million is the net revenue resulting from a decrease in the sales tax revenue and an increase in funding for support positions. And I'm happy to report to say that the support position funding is coming back to schools. Back in the Great Recession of 2009, 2010, the support position funding was one of the most significant cuts to school divisions. At that time, we lost about $2.3, $2.5 million as a school division. And over the term of those years, we lost in excess of $30 million. So it's good to see some of that funding come back to us. We had an increase in incentive funding, and you'll see there the asterisk, this does not include school construction funding. And what I need to point out here is if you were to look at the VDOE calculation tool, and this is, this is what details by line item all of our funding. School construction is included in the incentive funding, but we pulled that out of that calc tool, and we don't put it in our operating budget, we put it in our capital improvement budget. It's not included in these changes here, and I'll talk about that in the next slide. But here again, we have the net of several changes. First, the compensation increase for July 1, 2022, was pushed back to August 1. This cost us about $142,000. In addition, much of the add-on for at-risk students was eliminated, and this cost us approximately $220,000. And then the General Assembly provided state sales tax hold harmless funding, which adds roughly $618,000. So all totaled, we have a net increase of $252,000. And then there's a decrease in lottery funding in the amount of $71,000. This eliminates the proposed increase in early reading intervention funding. And then again, the bonus funding. The asterisk here is that this is the state portion of the bonus, and there's no matching requirement. So the $1.2 million represents that state funding for those SOQ and support positions. School divisions are encouraged to match the bonus but are not required. Funds would be available to school divisions on December 1. As these particular funds come from the state, they are not state general funds, but they are ARPA grant funds. And that's, that's kind of out of the norm of what we see from, from, from the state as far as compensation funding. The state is promoting this as a one-time bonus payment. However, to provide all employees a $1,000 bonus would cost the school division more than $1.9 million when you factor in all positions and the related FICA cost. So I'll add, at this point, that the school division has yet to identify the matching funds for this bonus. So if we were just left with $1.2 million, it would provide the employees with about $660 to $680 of the bonus if we, if we are unable to identify the matching funds. So we'll, we'll continue working through this, and I expect that we'll have an update for the, for the board in either October or November. So let's talk a little bit about the school construction. So the governor's proposed budget included $5.2 million in school construction funding. And board members, you'll recall that this was added to the CIP budget approved in January, and this funding allowed us to move forward with the Seaford Elementary expansion and renovation project. However, the General Assembly budget only included $4.1 million in construction funds, which was a decrease of $1.1 million. So let me walk you through the proposed expenditure changes to the revenue. For the budget that was approved in March, there were no increases to fuel or electricity, and as we've all seen, the fuel has just skyrocketed. So staff is proposing to add $100,000 for each line item. Additionally, we are proposing to increase the cost-of-living adjustment to employee compensation by 0.5%. So if approved, teachers and par educators would receive 6.5%, and all other employees would receive 5.5%. We are proposing the transfer of $1.165 million of what would normally be operating funds, or we're proposing that it be transferred to the CIP to account for the loss of school construction funding. This will ensure that the Seaford project will remain on schedule. Additionally, we're also proposing to increase the tech reserve fund totaling 1.81,000. And last, we're adding the funding for the employee proposed bonus. So total changes to expenditures equals $3.3 million, and this agrees to the increase in revenue. And again, this is just a snapshot of what's happened with our average daily membership. So for FY '22, the budget, you see that on the screen at 22B, our enrollment was projected at 12,420. Where we stand right now with the 22E as of May is 12,650. And so we looked at the enrollment, we've seen the numbers increase, this does not account for any summer enrollment, and it certainly doesn't account for, it does account for some projection of what we expect to receive with the county employees joining the school division. And so we feel comfortable that the 12,766 is a relatively conservative number. And this concludes the budget update for this afternoon, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So just one, the increase in fuel costs is for all of FY '23, is $100,000 going to be enough, do you think?
That's a good question. It's certainly something that, we have some other reserve funds that we could tap into if we need to. We set aside, we do set aside some funds for changes in enrollment, so if there are unexpected increases that haven't been accounted for, we can pull into those funds and hire, and we'll have the funding to hire teachers. So we do have some funding there, and if we need to, we could temporarily tap into some, some ESSER funding.
Because, I mean, we just don't know, you're right, like, how long we're going to have to sustain these prices.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any idea of the budget now on the, on the governor's desk, if he's going to look at scrapping some of those line items, or do we have a sense that he's going to sign it to approve it as-is?
Nothing is known as of, as of today. What I will say is that there were two major initiatives that were not funded. One was completely eliminating the grocery tax. They eliminated the state portion but not the local localities portion, which we're very glad that that didn't occur because that could impact us ultimately, and we could see less state, local revenue. The second was the college labs. The governor had proposed $150 million, Governor Youngkin, $150 million for these college labs. What he got was $100 million. And where that came from, it appears, it came from the school construction funding, because that was reduced by $100 million. So there certainly could be, in fact, I expect that if there is a change, it could come from one of those two categories.
Mr. Sheerhart, any questions?
That was, that was my question, was, I was surprised at the General Assembly budget, kind of a million dollars from the school construction funding, but now that, that makes, that makes sense, and that's how they found money for the other. The only other question I have was about the increase to the tech reserve of 181. Is that truly needed, or what, I'm not familiar with how much is in there now.
So, yes, that is needed. We had hoped to put in a little bit more there, and unfortunately, we couldn't because of the construction that we're having, the construction funding we're having to make. There are a couple of areas that we're, that we continue to watch very closely. One is health insurance. And I'm happy to report that we're seeing much better experience with our health insurance, health insurance fund. We expect that we'll have to transfer about a million and a half to a million seven on the high side, so we feel very comfortable with that. And then with the tech reserve fund, in 2025, we have, as it stands now, about $11 million refresh, not just of the one-to-one devices, but of all of the devices that are scheduled for that particular year. These might be servers and switches, really high-dollar items, and so while we need to contribute some larger sums, the money that we have from this end of year will all be dedicated to the tech reserve fund. And we'll know more about that in August. But right now, we're projecting somewhere between $3.5 to $10 billion. And this money is, is generated largely from unfilled positions throughout the year, and as, as Dr. Vladu has updated as many times over the course of the year, is that we've had numerous positions, key positions, that have been unfunded, and the accumulated salary and benefits cost makes up those, largely makes up those balances.
Glad to hear that the experience dynamic with health, with our health insurance is consistent with the projections. That's, that's certainly good. And the refresh, we just may have to look at how we stagger, you know, some of our infrastructure versus some of the client, our laptops.
I will share, I didn't mention this, but the 0.5% increase in the COLA comes to about $575,000. If we added that to the bonus, that would give us close to what we needed to match, not all of it, but close to, but really, what the superintendent really wanted to do was to make that compensation permanent, if possible. That's really where we need to make more impact, is with our, that permanent compensation and VRS credible compensation. We would love to be able to fund that $1,000, but at this point, it's just, we just can't find it in the budget.
Are there stipulations on that, the bonus line item, that you can use it for a permanent compensation, or is it just, it's a one-time thing that you have to?
It's one-time funding, so I wouldn't recommend that we use the one-time funding for permanent compensation.
So what you're saying on the bonus piece is that we have a little bit of time because it wouldn't come into effect until December?
Until December 1. That's when the money becomes available to us.
So you still have time to work your magic to...
I'm glad the state reached into ARPA. I mean, that was...
Yeah, yeah.
They have given us one option to match, and that is using ESSER funds, but all of our ESSER funds are currently budgeted for. And there's really only one pot of the ESSER funds, and again, that, it'll be difficult to change the, the direction of that program to use that to match for the bonus.
So that, with that 0.5 COLA increase, that makes a 6.5 for teachers and pairs, and then five and a half for everyone else. And where would, when would that take effect then?
At the start of the fiscal year.
Okay.
July 1.
July 1 for 12-month employees, and then August for the 10-month.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Bowen. You're moving on to the next. All right. All right, well, next we have the debt set-off program.
Yes, so we'll ask Mr. Bowen to remain and discuss information relating to the debt set-off program.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Carroll, this is, information I'm providing you today is, is related to a resolution that you'll approve in the next meeting. But the set-off debt collection program, this is a program that's managed by the Virginia Department of Taxation. It's available to government agencies in Virginia. It requires the board's approval to participate. Currently, our local government participates, as most local governments do. Governmental agencies submit claims or debts to the Department of Taxation, and these debts are then matched against eligible tax refunds or, or certain lottery prizes. And then once, if there is a successful match, then those funds are captured and then returned to the government agency. We have had quite the experience of debt with former employees, and it has to do with the way we have practiced our leave. It's been a longstanding practice to front teacher leave all upfront at the beginning of the year. And so if a teacher, for some reason, becomes sick and they use all their leave, and then they go on leave without pay, or then they leave us, then there's a portion of leave that has been unearned but yet's been paid to them. And then it's very difficult then to capture those funds back because, well, they haven't been employed. So our first course of action has always been to try and work with the employees. So our first course of action has always been to try and work with the employee. We call the employee, we send notifications, we will work on a payment plan if necessary. But there have been occasions where some employees just have refused to pay. And so participating in this program would be the last resort to collect that, a debt, because we certainly want to work with our former employers, our employees as, as much as possible.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bowen. Appreciate that. All right, that was our last presentation on our work session agenda. A lot of time and effort put forth from staff to provide the updates, and we're grateful for that. The work session is adjourned, and we're going to take a five-minute break before the special meeting.[1796.65][1796.65]